Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Welcome back to White Plains. First time back here. This group's been on the road for our last couple of meetings, so it's good to be back at the home office. I'm John Comel, board chair. With me are not-so-new trustees Balboni and Traynor, now that you're in meeting number two. And you're almost seasoned veterans like trustees McKibben and McCandry are with us. Again, unfortunately trustees Kress and Pacente were unable to join and otherwise occupied today. Gil, Justin, Bob, Karen, Laura are here with us before the assembled masses join a bit later. This is a meeting that's otherwise been scheduled and duly noticed as required by the open meetings law. And I'm pleased to call this joint power authority and canal board meeting to order. We've all have an agenda in front of us that I'm sure we've dutifully reviewed and prepared for. Unless there's any amendments or changes proposed, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion. Have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We will, as customary, start the meeting in executive session, plus or minus an hour or so. So if I could, I'd ask to have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the financial and credit history of a particular corporation.
I would move under section 105 of the public officers law to go into executive.
Better stated, thank you very much, Judge. Have a second. Have a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carried. We'll reconvene shortly. Thank you very much. All right, welcome back again.
I'd move we go back into open session.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, we're officially back in open session. So welcome, everyone. We now have our customary full squad turnout. Gil, his team, and those that otherwise support them and do the real work. As always, no votes were taken during executive session. All of us, as trustees, were polled prior to the meeting in terms of any potential conflicts and actions to be taken. Are there any other changes or any amendments to those? Everybody's good? Everybody's duly noticed? All right, super. Our first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Everyone's had an opportunity to review those materials. If I could, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some of.
Have a second?
Second.
Before we take a vote on that, there's one item in the consent agenda that's a byproduct of our governance committee discussion this morning.
Yes.
Judge, could you briefly comment on the appointment of our new treasurer?
It's my pleasure as running the, chairing the governance committee this morning, Mr. Chairman, that we recommend to the board the appointment of Genevieve Fabella as the new treasurer for the authority. She's replacing someone who will be addressed later on in the meeting, but I don't see her. Is she here?
She's out creatively financing something, I think, Judge.
But she met with us in governance committee this morning, and I just, even though it's on the consent agenda, I would just like to, you know, publicly.
Duly noticed, of course. Very impressive. Well done there, Bob. Well done. Understand. All right, with the benefit of that, and do kudos to Genevieve. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, with that, Mr. President and CEO, start us up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, trustees, NIPA management, and the public for watching our board meeting today. I will do a little bit of a different report in this board meeting. I want to give you an update of what we are doing to help the Puerto Rican Electric Power Authority, PREPA. I will then talk about, give my normal report about our strategy, and then at the end, there is one item in the discussion agenda that I will ask your approval. It's item 5C, number six. So with that, let me start with an overview and an update on where we are in our assistance with Puerto Rico. As you know, Governor Cuomo has marshaled the resources and the assets of the state and the private sector to help Puerto Rico after Hurricane Irma and especially Hurricane Maria. So last Friday morning, we flew to Puerto Rico, led by Governor Cuomo, as you can see here. JetBlue was kind enough to donate two airplanes filled with supplies, generators, cots, foods, medicine, et cetera. I was there with about 10 NIPA employees who are experts in transmission generation, and they are going to be helping PREPA in the damage assessment. We were also accompanied by a couple of employees from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. They are drone pilots with their drones, again, to help in the damage assessment of the transmission and distribution system.
So this is our NIPA SWAT team this year?
This is the NIPA SWAT team. I forgot to give them the NIPA t-shirts and the NIPA blazers, but in short notice, they all responded, mostly from Messina and Utica. They are led here. I'll give kudos and credit to Joe Kessler and Saul Rojas. They've been, Joe has been the incident commander of, in our emergency response process here, and they've been doing a great job, you know, not organizing and deploying, but also now monitoring and supporting and assisting from New York. Let me give you a little bit of, you know, what I saw during that tour. This is a neighborhood conversion park. That's the military truck that the governor was on. I was on the truck behind it, and we were going through the neighborhood conversion park, which is completely under the wire in Puerto Rico. There have been several places that look like this. This was the place that we checked out. The grid in Puerto Rico is completely out of service, so there is no power at all to three and a half million Puerto Ricans. Cell towers are 95% out, so very difficult communication, even through email, it's been completely difficult. So we have been communicating with our team, mostly through cell phones. There's an area where there's some, the 5% with cell service, where we can talk to them twice a day. We're testing our satellite phones and see whether we can utilize that. We gave them seven satellite phones, and so we have various ways of communicating with them. We also inspected San Juan by helicopter, Black Hawk helicopters. That's Governor Roselló of Puerto Rico showing Governor Cuomo the damage on the ground from Hurricane Maria. We have three goals in our team. Our team's mission, one, is to help in the damage assessment; two, to help triage the work that needs to be done, prioritize them; and three, to help them fill out the necessary applications to FEMA, to the Puerto Rican government, and then eventually to FEMA, so that assets from the mainland, largely from the federal government, can be deployed to Puerto Rico. We predict that this is, based on the assessment of our experts, that this is not a, you know, it's not going to take weeks to restore and rebuild their power grid. It will take months, maybe even years, if certain assets have to be raised above ground, you know, away from floodplains or sectionalize some of the grid. As you can see, it's just, it was unbelievable sight, especially in, you know, when you're actually down there, it's much more dire than what you see, what we have been seeing on TV. At the time, the people seemed to be, at least when I was there, in good enough spirits, and they were, you know, smiling and saying hello to us, but conditions are really very difficult. So these are the kind of things that, some of the things that we brought in that JetBlue Then the governor also has organized a public-private campaign to raise money and to get collections of goods and services that can be deployed to Puerto Rico. The National Guard has set up collection points across the state. That will be brought to the Jacob Javits Center as the staging point, again, in partnership with JetBlue, to bring those resources to Puerto Rico. And on a parallel path, the partnership for New York City, this has also set up a fundraising, private sector fundraising effort campaign to raise money for Puerto Rico. So I'm, you know, very proud of our team. We're adding a lot of value, working with our sister utility there, PREPA. We have the right expertise. Their system is very similar to ours. They have 230 KV and 138 KV transmission system. It's what we have and what we own and operate here in New York. So it's very familiar technology to our employees, and I'm sure over time that we're going to be able to work very closely with them and give them our opinion and our advice as they need them along the way. We spoke to them last night. It's still early in the game. They've assessed their 40% of their transmission system, and of that, 80% of that 40% basically have been completely destroyed and cannot be repaired, meaning they have to be rebuilt. So if that trend continues, it's probably like that, both on the transmission and distribution system. 80 to 90% probably are not salvageable, but have to be completely rebuilt. So more to come.
All that implies a longer-term commitment from us as well? Is that your expectation? What you're thinking is that, you say months and potentially years, where, you know, supplying intellectual capital, PREPA's been challenged historically, so they're now operating from a position of strength to begin with, and then to be obliterated in this kind of situation is what your expectation is with looking ahead?
Right now, we're going on a two-week-by-two-week commitment, because we want to make sure that there is adequate lodging and security for our own people there. Right now, we have adequate lodging and adequate security, and I think the type of help also will change over time. At some point, a full request will be, or a series of requests will be submitted, we expect submitted, to FEMA, and FEMA then will coordinate with the, what's called the Electric Electricity Subsector Coordinating Council, which is a group comprised of the utility trade associations, American Public Power Association, Edison Electric Institute, which is the trade association of investor-owned utilities, and NREC, which is the trade association of the rural cooperatives. The mutual aid utility crews at some point will be deployed by the federal government to Puerto Rico to help in the rebuilding of their grid. Maybe we would be sending some of our employees to that, but, you know, we'll see. There are a lot of utilities in the southeast, those that have been finishing up work over there, and contractors that can be deployed by FEMA as well. I think you hit it, you know, correctly, Mr. Chairman, that a lot of our advice is more advisory and intellectual capital at this point, and probably will continue to do so again if PREPA needs that for an extended period of time. But, you know, we have the same, practically the same transmission system, and we're very familiar with that technology and the operation of those assets.
Oh, sorry, Judge.
What's the prospect for the availability of equipment on the island? I mean, you know, post-hold diggers and...
Yeah, well, most likely that when FEMA gets the request, they will most likely deploy the assets of the Department of Defense. So barges and air cargo planes will bring those trucks, you know, bucket trucks and equipment and supplies to the island.
But you've already said priority aren't the safety, security of our employees, and you remain confident that they're in as good a place as they can be under the...
Under the circumstances, correct.
Okay.
Okay, so that's Puerto Rico. More to come.
Kudos to them and you and Joe and the team for mobilizing so quickly. As we've chatted a little bit, I mean, this is one of those, at least from my ignorant perspective, a humanitarian effort that's never hit this close to home. I mean, most of these type of situations are halfway around the world, and this is literally in our own backyard. So kudos for being part of a rapid response effort here to otherwise stabilize what has to be an incredibly unstable situation.
Yeah, but really proud of the team, proud of the power authority that we could be part of addressing a humanitarian crisis in Puerto Rico.
Right.
Okay, now shifting to an update on our strategy, I just want to...
And who's going to eat the cereal? That's all I want to know. But that's who's concerned.
What kind do they have there?
Across the place, right in the wheelhouse. I liked it. Right. Sugar Pops.
So in our July meeting, you heard a lot about our digital strategy. I just want to give you an update on that. Now, why are we aspiring to be the first digital utility in the United States, maybe in the world? We're digitizing because if you look at the electric utility industry, it's an industry where the utilization of the infrastructure is very low. As you can see, compared to other capital-intensive industries, our utilization is about 55%. There's a reason for that. The grid in New York is built to meet the hottest of the hottest days in July's and August, probably 100 hours. When you build a grid to meet the need of that, of those 100 hours, but most of the year, it's not really used. And that's the reason why we're evolving in New York. Governor Cuomo has a policy called Reforming the Energy Vision, where we want to deploy more distributed and decentralized resources to plan, operate the grid. And by doing so, we can increase the capacity utilization of the power grid, therefore optimize the amount of capital investments and make the grid more affordable and resilient and cleaner over time. So the, but to be able to decentralize and have distributed resources, you need really a, for lack of a better term, IT infrastructure to conduct that orchestra of many more distributed resources. And that's why you need digital technology, and that's why we are taking the lead in becoming a completely digital utility. Also, the utility industry is not immune to getting disrupted. There's a lot of disruption due to technology right now. If you look at this, S&amp;P 500, the lifespan of S&amp;P 500 companies, a lot of this are due to, you know, it's getting shorter and shorter because of technology. And a lot of sectors like media, you know, taxi, Airbnb, Uber, and Airbnb, on the lodging, completely disrupting industries. And the utility is not immune to getting disrupted by technology, and that's why we're digitizing. That's why we're taking that leap to make sure that we are, we can evolve to this new distributed, decentralized, smart grid utility. Now, it's not just, you know, digital is not just about technology. We, you know, we heard from somebody that we have been working with here in the power authority, it's really, it's not just a diet, it's more of a lifestyle change. And so it really has to be embedded in our DNA across the board, in everything that we do in the organization, from management all the way to the field force, our equipment, our assets, our processes, our enterprise, our back office, et cetera. And that's what we're doing here in the power authority. Why are we doing this now? Well, we believe, as I've mentioned before, that it is a necessary strategy or tactic to be able to evolve NIPA from the current one-way flow grid to a distributed, decentralized, multi-flow power grid. And also, it's the key enabler for us in putting the customer at the center of this transformation and creating as much value for our customers going forward. So that's why we are digitizing. I'm not going to cover this. This is the goals that we want to make sure for, that we deliver to our customers, you know, energy productivity. When we digitize, again, the orchestration of this smart grid, our goals that we want to have, I've given you, we gave you a draft last July of our refreshed strategy. I want to give kudos to Bob Lurie and his team for leading our entire management in refreshing the strategy that we developed back in 2013, 2014. We're kind of halfway there, this, we'll call it NIPA 2020, and we made the necessary mid-game adjustments lately. Now, we have a plan, and we're executing this, and really, really excited and thrilled that, you know, we have been on the right path, but we're also making the right adjustments to accelerate the implementation of our strategy. With that, yes, question?
Before you go on, Bill. I think the effort to move into, to digitize our operations is absolutely the right direction, so it's great that NIPA's being a leader in this space. I guess as I think about, you know, one of the questions that I had is how are you thinking about making sure that there's a connection? And I see you've included the work that we're doing under NIAM and ISAC and Agile, which you informed us about at our last meeting, that we're creating an ecosystem to drive what we see as our role in sort of the New York State energy market. And so how are you, you know, how do you create throughout the, how are you thinking of creating throughout the enterprise? Because we've got lots of different programs moving. What's your, what's your approach to making sure that what we're creating is this ecosystem around digitization? Because it's a slow, this isn't a radial turn on a speedboat, it's a tanker. And so how are you...
So the interesting characteristic of NIPA is we're a public utility, and therefore we can set our information and create a platform so that third parties can partner with us and use our data and create new products and services, not only for our customers, but for all customers in New York State. And that's what we're doing. For example, for New York Energy Manager, where we're digitizing buildings. We now have 7,500, 8,000 government, largely government buildings, where we have created digital twins of those buildings. And what we plan to do is, you know, create, you know, a great analogy is your iPhone or your iPad, create a platform with our information so that other third-party providers can develop apps that will help our customer, but also help other customers across New York. We're going to do that, the same on our asset side of the business, generation and transmission, in our ISAC and Agile initiatives. And we believe that that will catalyze innovation in New York State under Rev. It will catalyze companies to want to be here in our ecosystem because of the platforms that we are creating. So more to come on that, but that's how we will create the ecosystem.
From a bigger-picture business perspective, 90 days ago in the year, what are, what's your focus? What's your perspective as you look ahead to year end to ensure the positive trends continue or anything at all that gives you pause or concern as you look ahead?
Well, today, our informational item, you will see the progress that we're making in our customer business. Very encouraged about that. Jill and her team have been really building that business up. You'll see the pipeline of our business is expanding. You will hear that our business in large-scale renewable is starting to really rev up. In December, during our December board meeting, we will be opening, you will be cutting the ribbon of our ISAC, and we will stand that up as well as Agile. So a lot of milestones to meet this year. The, you know, always when you digitize, the one thing that we have to think about is cybersecurity. And we have to infuse cybersecurity right from the beginning of every digitization process or project that we have, and think about it every step of the way. It's so hard to think about cyber later, after you do something. And so Casey Carnes, our chief cybersecurity officer, has been involved in this process. That's one thing that we got to, you know, put our attention, because if we don't take care of cyber, none of this digital, digitization works.
Right.
And it's a moving target. It's a very complex, emerging area.
But no other major speed bumps operationally or otherwise that give you pause at this point as we look to finish the year?
Not at all. The team has been inspired, they've been working really hard. We have a lot of balls up in the air, but we're doing well operationally.
Okay, anything else for Gil? All right, super.
Just one thing. I, as part of the, there's an item, item 5C, right, six in the discussion agenda. This is, we did an RFP to create a stable of partners, we call them digital strategy partners, various type of vendors that can provide various type of services. We asked that you approve that request, and it will be a five-year, $50 million contract. With that said, it's a reallocation, you know, the $50 million is not new, it's a reallocation of what you had already approved in the past, previous IP contracts.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would move the transfer of $50 million from information technology co-sourcing to, as previously approved by the trustees in May 2017.
Have a second?
Just one quick comment. Just following up on the digitization project. Which of these companies will be most involved in cybersecurity elements? Any of them, or is that a separate item?
I mean, GE is a key partner that we have, especially on the asset side, on generation and transmission. So they will be front and center in dealing cyber.
Thank you.
Any other questions? They got a motion and a second, I think. All in favor then? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Subagya on the risk management front. Our bubble chart is back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, trustees, and NIPA management, and everybody in the public. Good morning, trustees and NIPA management and everybody in the public. I will go pretty quickly on the bubble chat. This is familiar to you. We presented this, the updated bubble chat in the last July meeting. I'll be focusing my discussion today on some of the key initiatives that we are taking as risk management. Just on the bubble chat, you know, the, in terms of governance, we do have an executive risk management committee meeting that is chaired on a rotational basis by our executives. So right now, Joe Kestler is our chairman. So we have those ERMC meetings every month, and we discuss any potential change to the risk profile every month. So that's just from a governance perspective. So I'll talk about, today I'll talk about what we have been doing with regard to our insurance function, our risk management, as well as business resiliency. So we've started looking at insurance as, as a key partner to the business and not just a procurement function where we go and, you know, renew our insurance policies. So we're trying to answer three basic questions, you know, are we retaining the right amount of risk internally? Then the second thing is, are we, our coverage that we're buying is that, you know, corresponding with our exposure? And how much are we paying with retro premiums? How does it compare with the market? So that's the total cost of risk analysis which we are doing. Meanwhile, you know, we're looking at insurance as an alternative risk financing option. So there, it's one of the many options that's, that's available to the authority to protect the authority against catastrophic kind of risks. So some of the things that we're implementing as we speak is we're trying to integrate the Canal's property liability programs with NIPA, and that's going to result in $300,000 to $600,000 savings in premiums per year. We are implementing owner-controlled insurance program. What that does is that it is...
Savings relative to what the combined amounts would have otherwise been?
Yes.
That's savings to us, historically, just on a combined basis.
Right, so what we were, we were spending right now with two different programs, if we combine them, because the risk diversification will save some money. And owner-controlled insurance program, this is, what this does is that, you know, we require our service providers, construction contractors, to buy insurance. So a lot of times they are, either because these small, smaller companies are not able to buy those insurance coverage, they get either, you know, weeded out because of that, or they buy, they have to pay a higher, very expensive insurance. Plus, the compliance of the insurance is a, is a, is a challenge. But if we aggregate that insurance for them, which is called the owner-controlled insurance program, we will be saving in terms of our total spend on construction, about $39 million over five years. So that's, that's being implemented right now. We're working with Bob's team, John Canali Procurement, to make that happen. The next one is Canal's workers' comp program. Right now, Canal's workers' comp program is with the state insurance fund. We believe that if we manage it the way we're managing our NIPA's workers' comp program, we're going to be saving in terms of premium, a cost of the program, $600,000, upwards of $600,000 a year. So though that, that's being implemented right now, we actually have that in the consent agenda for, for board authorization. And as I said...
Can I ask a question on that? Do we have, does Canal's have in place people to, to manage the self-insured program? Or how, how is that going to work? State fund does it now, I assume their people do it. Who's going to do it?
So it was originally being managed by a throughway authority. Canal's does have some, they call the TAs, seven TAs, that are basically collecting information with regard to workers' comp. So there, we're working with them. We have hired one person exclusively to, to manage Canal's workers' comp program. So we will be doing that. And we, we feel that, you know, it's, it's very, not only expensive today with the SIF, it is very difficult to get any data out of it to do any analytics, because they, it's just, and then the other thing is, which is very interesting, you know, with throughway, the experience factor by which the workers' comp rates are, are, are estimated was .83, and with, if you take Canal's out, it's .5. Canal's is a lot healthier in terms of workers' comp compared to when, how it was being treated with throughway together. So we're trying to take advantage of it. SI was, if it's not going to give us the advantage of that, we're not going to... Yeah, so we, if we manage it ourselves, that's going to transfer, translate into a, you know, a pretty decent amount of savings a year. The next one is, you know, with regard to our enterprise risk management, we have been working very closely with our audit team, Joe Grislow is here, compliance, ethics compliance, and, you know, our cyber teams, to put together a governance risk compliance tool. So we just had the RFP out, and our target is to complete implementation of this by the Q4 of next year. What this will do ultimately is that they'll have one consistent way of looking at risk among all these different functions which are looking at risk. Instead of audit, looking at risk in a different way, or ethics, looking at risk in a different way, we'll have one consistent risk taxonomy. So that's, that's moving. I just wanted to give you an update, and we'll come back to you on that periodically and...
You're saying this is a single source of truth? I mean, that's pretty...
That, that's correct. That, that's correct. So, so this, this will be the one universal ware, data warehouse, and then all these different functions are going to be querying data and running the reports and inputting data as well into, into that, that tool. So it's, it's also our kind of contribution to the digitization of NIPA. So I'm, I'm very excited about that. The next one is, we talked to you, talked to the trustees in July of '16 about the business resiliency framework. So this has come quite far. In fact, you know, there are three aspects to the business resiliency as we have seen. So we're doing the business continuity, emergency management, physical security, disaster recovery, and cyber incident response things. We're bringing them all together into a business resiliency framework, and Gil had actually challenged us to come up with a minimum viable product, which we've, we've done. Gil has not talked to me whether he's happy with that or not, but, you know, we've completed that. And we did the tabletop exercise with all the executives, including our CEO, run by operations team, Saul and JT led that. I thought it was pretty successful. Again, I have not heard from Gil whether, what he feels. But we are moving along, particularly like Gil said about the digital utility, business resiliency with all its aspects is, we think it's very important, and we're driving as a, we're collaborating between IT operations and risk management to bring it all together. That's really all my report. Any questions?
Back to your bubble chart for a minute. I mean, I've asked you this multiple times. Tell me one more time in terms of cyber. So you place it in the, excuse me, at the highest level in terms of likelihood, but only a moderate level in terms of impact. Help me refresh my memory or educate me again on why I'm comfortable that the impact is less than I would have otherwise anticipated it to be.
So this is, actually, we changed this, this year when we did the risk update. So compared to last year, this is only relative to, to last year, the impact moved from last year, because last risk assessment, we did not have a lot of things in place last time. This year, when we did the risk assessment, we really improved our ability to, to observe the potential impact. So there are a lot of mitigation strategies in place. So that's why this is, this is, the impact is a little lower than what you had seen last time. I would ask Ken if you have any, any comments on this?
So we've worked a lot on the respond and recovery, not just the monitoring, but also if we were to have a cybersecurity event, do we have other systems in place? Even, even like when we were talking before around manual controls of our operations? So we've got other mitigating factors to, to try to recover very quickly or to minimize the impact.
Okay.
But I understand your discomfort, because generally a cybersecurity incident, it could have, it's hard to get your head around that it would have a small impact. I understand that we, we have, we've put in place processes to help respond and mitigate any damage, but, so that's why I think, right, is that what you're thinking? It's hard to visualize that a cybersecurity incident wouldn't have a very outsized impact on the business.
Kind of messaging hackers, go someplace else, because you're really not going to hurt as much, right?
I have to assure all of you that this is a top enterprise risk. This is not, in terms of our resource allocation to cybersecurity, this is a top risk, and it's being, you know, given the attention that it needs to, perhaps more because of our digital utility efforts. But we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that one more time.
It's a good news rating, and I'm just trying to better understand the, the substance of it as opposed to some of the other risks that are arguably less likely, but much, you know, of much higher impact. I'm just trying to make sure that...
I think what would be helpful, Mr. Chairman, is to see how the movements of the bubbles over time. If, you know, this was relative to, you know, the last time we showed this to you, cyber was more on the, on the upper right-hand corner, and it moved to the middle as a reflection of the things that we did within the organization. But it doesn't mean that cyber is no longer a, a risk. So I think we need to show the...
Top enterprise risk.
We need to show the movement.
I'm just trying to get the, even whether it's relative or absolute, I'm just trying to understand or make sure, we as a board understand, yeah, the, the relative exposure as well as the absolute exposure.
Yes.
How we otherwise deploy, deploy our own resources to mitigate and, and manage the risk, that's all.
Okay, okay. Just make one comment. I got a chance to meet last week with the cyber team, and I found it to be very informative, very professional, a lot of thought has been put into this. One of the challenges, of course, with categorizing a cyber risk is to recognize the scope of the threat, in which it ranges from a, a defacement of your web page to a, a override of your SCADA, your supervisor control and data access systems. And that risk is so broad.
Right.
You know, from data exfiltration to simply somebody coming in with a malicious intent, an employee, you know, if that were to happen, there's a whole range of things. The worst, of course, is that compromise of the operational systems, which is, is kind of theoretical at this point in time in the United States. Have you ever seen that specifically? That would be in my, exactly, that would be in my estimation, the top risk that we would face, aside from a catastrophic infrastructure failure. But nonetheless, it, to lump it all into, this is a cyber breach, a cyber incident, it's kind of, it's hard to characterize because of magnitude of the various types of incidents.
Understood, well stated. Okay. All right, well, we'll spend more time with that.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Anything else for Subhagya?
Just a quick question. Canal's, there's, I think there's something in the program today, awarding contracts on security and upgrading of, but that's factored into your risk here, the vulnerability of the assets that we inherited with Canal Corporation, correct?
So this is the cyber one?
No, no, I'm not talking about this particular slide, I'm talking in general.
On the consent agenda?
Yes. There was money being spent on security items, I think RFPs have already gone out.
Well, is this bubble chart just for NIPA or including Canal's?
It is just for NIPA right now, yeah. We are actually carrying out Canal's risk assessment as we speak right now.
Yes, Judge, so it's covered, but it's on the Canal's...
Side.
Side of the equation, yeah.
We can come back, I think it's part of, you know, December, a little bit of a refresh and all of that.
Yes, yes, yep, thank you.
All right, super, thanks, Subhagya. Robert, update on our continuing to improve financial results and position?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Justies, good morning. Reporting on our year-to-date financial results as of the end of August, our budgeted year-to-date net income through August was $61 million. Our actual was obviously well ahead of budget. Our actual net income year-to-date was $171 million. The major items of variance through, through August were, number one, we had higher-than-expected margins on energy sales, both due to hydro volumes that we've talked about in the past that are running well ahead of our forecast. Also, net transmission sales, net of our reduced HTP capacity payments that we, we discussed at length at the last meeting. We also have lower operating expenses of about $44 million. We expect some of that to reverse, but not all of it by the end of the year. Some of it is due to timing, some of it is just due to managing our expenses better than we expected. We have a lower depreciation than we'd forecast of about $11 million due to some essentially regulatory actions related to how we forecast and recover our depreciation. And then, as we've discussed in the past, some one-time, one-time items, non-operating items, one is the payment from Entergy that we've talked about before, also higher-than-expected investment income of about $8 million. So these are all of the line items that contribute to our income running ahead of forecast. If we look at the year-end projection, our budgeted year-end net income was expected to be $77 million. We're now forecasting that to be $134 million. Again, the major item there is energy margins, largely having to do with hydropower volumes that are well ahead of forecast. We're running about 11% higher than our budget. Typically, we budget less than what our forecasters say in order to be conservative, but our actuals are running ahead, not just of our budget, but also of the initial forecast. So it's been, it's been a good year for hydro volumes, and is expected to stay that way through the end of the year. Energy prices and capacity prices have declined, but our hedging program has largely offset those declines, at least for this year. That won't be quite the case as much next year as those prices stay at lower levels for a long period of time. Additional drivers of the year-end projection, again, include operating expenses that we expect to be below budget. As you can see, not quite as much as it's been year-to-date, but we expect it to still be below our forecast, just some delays in implementing some, some of our programs. Depreciation and amortization being somewhat below budget as well, and then those continued non-operating items. So the last item I want to point out is this line item at the end, what I've labeled asset write-down. You'll be hearing further on in this meeting from Tim Zandies, who's going to explain a proposed long-term service contract relating to our 500-megawatt plant. Pursuant to that agreement with GE, there, we expect that there are going to be some major part replacements, rotors and the like. And while that is going to result in some long-term savings and some more efficiency at the plant, greater output, it will also mean that the existing parts that they are replacing, that which we have had on the balance sheet and are depreciating, are no longer of value. So we believe that the appropriate way to treat that, and we're still discussing this with our, our auditors, is to write down those assets before the end of the year, and the value that we're estimating is about $65 million. There's a range around that, it could be 60 to 70 roughly, but we, our, our best estimate right now is that we... But we, our best estimate right now is that we will write those off before the end of the year. So it's not 100% certain, but since that's my best estimate as of today, I thought I would alert you to that possibility before the end of the year. We'll have more to come on that. Any questions on that before I move on?
In terms of operations, Bob, operating expenses, the saves there, what aren't we doing? Just better, smarter, wise or more information as to what's needed or not? Or have we made decisions to walk away or walk back from investments that we otherwise would have made? And what's the soundbite around that?
I think it's, it's a couple of things. One is just, you know, our, particularly our, our operations team doing a great job at managing their, their spend, being more efficient with how they spend money, things like, you know, the way we hire or replace people and making sure we examine those very carefully. There's also some programs that we, we enter into, for example, solar programs, energy efficiency programs, that, where they've been previously authorized spending by the board, that the timing of which is always uncertain at the beginning of the year. So that may drift into next year a little bit.
Is that indicative of a pullback or step away from?
No, in fact, I think certainly of all of the, the items that Gil has talked about in our strategic plan, we're really trying to refocus and accelerate our efforts in some areas, especially in the digitization and, and customer energy area.
Okay.
Being well into our life extension program, are we seeing a reflection in our operating expenses, less expenses, because we have invested in the replacement of aging and...
Yes, I would ask Joe to speak to that.
The short answer is yes. Actually, we just talked to our team about putting together kind of an itemized list of those things, because we're starting to see these operation expenses drop and recognize it may be due to maintenance intervals and the amount of staff that we have managing those specific things. And also the rounds that we produce had, didn't prior to any digitization effort or upgrading, you know, was people walking around, you know, taking notes. So some of that, those items are now monitored, for example, and are live on the operations dashboard. So those little things there, we're just trying to quantify now exactly what the, the impact is to operating income, but, or operating expense, but we believe it's had an impact.
Well, I think it'd be helpful to the trustees, I mean, concern is we're not, if we don't spend enough on operation and expenses, that there's a justification for not doing that and we ought to be brought up to date on what the reflection is based upon investments we made in life extension and things like that, so that, you know, it's, we're not spending less money, we're saving money.
Right, yeah, we've actually, we started to compile that information, we'll get that to you.
So one of the, it's actually a great segue, thank you, trustee Nick Andry, to my next item, thank, I appreciate that. That's actually, my slide is missing, so I will, I will move forward. The other, the item I wanted to bring to your attention is the asset management support services. NiPA is requesting board approval of contracts, thank you, for consulting services related to our asset management strategy. So one of the ways in which we're making investments, trustee Nick Andry, is in using digital technologies to manage our assets better. And this is a capital investment, really, that we'll be making over time, which we hope will have the effect of lowering our operating expenses for the way, for operating these, our various plants. And this strategy has been central to the original strategic plan, where we had our so-called asset management strategy, and even more so now, our vision of becoming the first all-digital utility. This is really a central component of that. So the, the objective there is to get real-time information into our operations center, the ISOC, about the condition and an operating status of the plants in real time, and also doing predictive analytics with those, with that data, so that we can forecast how those assets are going to perform and not have to maintain them according to arbitrary, arbitrarily life cycles of maintenance and so forth. So we hope that will both improve operating performance, but also reduce the lifecycle cost of maintaining those assets. And then we can make investments in our assets on a prioritized basis, based on the actual condition of those assets that the data actually shows us. So we have consultants that have been helping us put this whole plan together. We have issued an RFP for, and received nine proposals for those consulting services. And today, we're recommending a ward of five contracts for a five-year term with a total cost of $15 million to the firms listed here.
And what do you anticipate the deployment of that 15 to be over the next five years, Bob, or is that still to be defined?
I, I think that's something that's to be determined by staff that's working on this. I don't know, Joe, if you wanted to speak to that at all, but...
I'm sorry, say it again, Bob.
The, the $15 million, how that will be deployed over the five-year term.
Yeah, five-year period, it'll be...
But how, I mean, is that, are we approving any specific deployment or that's just a basket or a bucket that you expect to work with?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a total cap on the cost and staff's going to utilize this group of consultants on an as-needed basis and divide up the work based on their expertise on specific areas. And that'll be over the, over the five-year period.
You expect to work with all five of those firms?
We do believe we will work with all five of them. So what, what, in the ISO 55000 structure, there's 39 key areas in asset management that we're trying to tackle. So some of them are around supply chain management, some are around configuration management, and some are, you know, financially related and things like that. So one consultant is not, we don't have one consultant that's really a subject matter expert in each one of those, so we're trying to have a pool of consultants. Some of them do cross paths, for example, TTA MCL, the fourth item there, are working very closely with on the overall strategy. So they got a touch point with almost every one of those points, but each one of them has its own role in, in how they would help us move this forward.
There's not specific contracts for those people?
No, there's not, right, right.
There will be essentially identical contracts entered into with each one of them.
Just one, you know, one question. So I know that we currently work with Deloitte and Touche, that they assist us with some of the cyber issues, and apparently I understand that they were recently hacked and we're going to get a report from them. Does that change any of our concerns about this particular proposal, I mean, the acceptance of this RFP, does it, are they, are there cyber security services to us a part of this bucket or is this a separate RFP?
Yeah, as far as I know, that's separate. And maybe Ken can speak to that.
It is separate, you know, and, and so we're working with Deloitte on the identifying exactly what happened. You know, it's early in the process, as you know. We have been in touch and they have notified us that NiPA has not been impacted with any of the breach on their email system.
Right.
Obviously, you know, we'll continue to monitor and adjust if needed.
Would you come back to us and let us know when, whatever?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is request for broad-based approval, go forward, to be deployed, estimate of 15 million needed to execute.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions on that? Otherwise, it could have a motion to approve. So move to second. Second, thanks, Dennis. Depending further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or motion carried?
Thank you very much, trustees.
Before you go, Canals, you didn't specifically talk about Canals, so for all the time effort and energy expended throughout '16 and year-end, get your arms around what Canals would require? It's playing out as anticipated, been no major surprises there? I've heard you single out, out Canals.
No, Canals, Canals is pretty much running on budget, I think, as you heard in July.
The best that we are expecting to make is...
In terms of the totals, we expect, looking forward, that there probably will be some change in priorities based on the assessment that the teams have done. But to date, the, the numbers are running on, on budget or close to budget. We've, the, the numbers I showed you include Canals, but the, but it was, it was relatively immaterial in terms of the total dollars, so I didn't single those out.
Which is fine, so just clarifying what was implied. I mean, Canals so far so good, no major hiccups, no major surprises.
That's correct.
From a spending standpoint, okay. I agree. Jill, thanks, Bob. Joe, Joe's up first, sorry. Got my Joe and Jill, Jack and Jill. Ladies first, but not for Joe.
Thank you, Chairman, good morning, and good morning, trustees, staff, Gil. This is the operations report. You know what, you're going to advance for me? Oh, there's one here, okay. Good news, we're all in the green on our typical measures that we demonstrate for you monthly. Generator market readiness is no surprise, we've been running really great when asked. That measure has a very narrow window, 99 would be bad for us, so if you're looking at those numbers saying, wow, that's kind of tight, there's a significant difference in our operations from a reliability standpoint and financially between 99 and 100, so it's actually a very good measure for us. Transmission, as opposed to generation, also includes planned outages, so that's an illustration that we're not only ahead on the fact that we've had any unexpected outages in transmission, but that our planned outages are, are working ahead of schedule as well. Environmental incidents, we had three minor incidents since our last meeting. They're mostly like hydraulic spills of, of equipment and things like that. And then, right, and, and then DART rate, we are on track, just good news, no major injuries at the power authority, but always emphasizing those as well. The year has been a challenging year in terms of emergency management. Very early in the season, we had some flooding in the Canals out in the Chittanango area. And what it made apparent to us is that in some ways, we had to update and refresh some of our playbooks of what was going on through Canals and the five regions that we have in the, in the power authority, including transmission is one of those. So we took a comprehensive effort that Subhagia touched on regarding IT and emergency management, IT business continuity and cybersecurity, to really refresh our, our calls, our, our playbooks, our basically, our fundamental information that we need to do to contact folks in these incidents. And unfortunately, we did, well, we did drill, fortunately, but unfortunately, we were able to put them into play a little too soon for us as well. And business continuity was really the first one that kind of impacted us, and it was really this hurricane season that has been really the driver around this. Harvey had obviously no direct impact to our operations whatsoever, but we did have vendors in Houston that were impacted, and very important ones for us, especially in our fossil fuel plants. So we were able to do some mitigating strategies in case we weren't have, we wouldn't have access to those vendors if we needed them on Harvey.
And Harvey and Irma, we didn't like, unlike Puerto Rico, we haven't deployed any team. We aren't supporting your fellow brethren in those states.
Actually, in Irma, we did. In Irma, we did. Jose is the one, we really didn't have to do any deployment, it kind of stayed out of sea and, and just threatened us the whole time. Irma, we actually did put two line crews on standby down here in the New Bergen and Tarrytown area for a potential deployment to Puerto Rico, but then maybe even Florida at that time. Our equipment and our assets are significantly larger than what they, they had for these disasters there. Their needs for Irma, especially Puerto Rico, were primarily distribution, and we have enormous line trucks and bucket trucks, so it didn't really meet their needs. So we stood on standby for about three or four days, and then once the mutual aid response was executed, we realized that those assets were working and we, we basically went back to work with, with those assets. So, and then Maria was a different story, as Gil touched on, so we are, we are down there right now with those folks. So Irma was a, a threat to us, we did stage that, and we, the one thing that we always have to keep in mind is as they creep up the East Coast, you know, do we need to have them here as well? So it's great to be friendly and help out Florida or someone else, but we can't leave us exposed. So we were trying to balance that as well, trying to track these hurricanes. It's become a, a little bit of a weather wonk lately. Canal Corporation, I'll touch on kind of the questions that you had as well, Chairman. We have been doing a significant amount of movement on the improvements here, and in the areas I think you're talking about. So vegetation management, the security, the safe and security of the facilities, and also safety of the employees. We've done a lot of work in the area of culture and education on that. That's the big thing for Canals right now, is getting them up to speed, getting them retrained. With the transition, even within Canals, there's a number of moves for personnel, so there's a lot of new supervisors, a lot of new managers. So bringing them up to speed and getting them trained on the kinds of things that are expected in terms of tailgate talks and things like that has really been helpful. And of course, we've been out there at senior management, Gil, myself, Kim and others, for safety barbecues, if you will, but meetings with all the hands to make sure that they understand they got the support from the top on all those initiatives. The dam safety and improvements there were, some of it was mitigated by transfer lands, which you're aware of. And also, we're doing a continued improvement of the system they had in place to kind of bring it up. It's not going to have the same rigor as a FERC requirement that we have, but we're trying to bring that kind of diligence to, to the Canals as far as their maintenance program there, and that's working as well. Code compliance, we were able to really get the support of Jill Anderson's group in commercial ops and energy services, to leverage energy services-type consultants to do a code review of all of our facilities, so all the ancillary buildings and outbuildings. And they came back with a comprehensive list that Bob talked about, that we really prioritized and really got, in, in an order that makes sense for safety. So it's exit signs, it's lighting, it's, it could be guard, handrails guarding, that kind of stuff. It's all part of these programs and these consultants are being used for that. So it was a great collaboration and a great idea to inject resources into Canals that they don't really have in terms of that kind of support. And then you also saw, I think in the consent agenda, some vessels, we've assessed every vessel, over 100 vessels, there's still many out there. Some of them need to be obsoleted and transferred or disposed, some need to be replaced and some, they just don't have the right tool for the job. There's, there's, there's equipment out there that's better for that. So we've done a complete assessment and we're working to get that fleet up to get, date as well.
Barbecues, is that code for burgers and beer or what?
Wasn't bur, I won't say beer, but no, there, I can't say there were burgers. And, and barbecues, I'll, Eric wore barbecues too, because, you know, sometimes it's a breakfast or whatever, but just getting with the staff on the ground floor, but yeah, it was a good time.
Okay.
You're on to me. You're on to me. There was food involved, so I was there. The Maximal Work Order system really too is another thing, they, they had logbooks and things like that, that they tracked all their information. That was difficult for us because we were trying to get a grasp of what the real expenses and, and operating costs would be, and it was difficult because a lot of it was manual, some were in other computer systems. So working with IT, we came up with a great solution, kind of as, software-as-a-solution type of program with Maximal, that matches what we're, what speaks our language at the New York Power Authority, and that's our maintenance program. So it's been actually very well-received, people have kind of jumped on board, and we've actually got a few ambassadors out there at Canals working forward on that. And we always like to give you an update on the transitional agreements, service agreements. We are on track for all the agreements, there's 25 of the 41 closed out now, and we're on track to close them out as we, as we described earlier.
Will we be out from under the other 16 by year-end or...
Not by year-end, some will be, almost all of them, but there's a few that creep into them, yep. So I have a couple items as well. Sorry, I know we're out of order here. I wanted to touch on the ones that Bob talked about in terms of the transmission line, but we'll do this one first, the long-term service agreement. This is a big one here that's important to us in our 500-megawatt plant.
Let's catch up to that.
Okay.
We're zigging and zagging.
Yep. This would be 5C5, I think.
I'm working on my page numbers, what page number, where are we?
137.
137?
That's what it says here on the agenda.
This is with General Electric.
This would be General Electric, right?
You want a motion on that?
Yeah, we're going to look for a motion on that.
Go ahead, I'll find it in my stuff.
So the authority is looking to enter into an agreement with General Electric for maintenance services at the 500-megawatt plant. This is a 24-year term or up to 128,000 hours on the units. There is an existing agreement that's in place, it's set to expire in 2018. So we started this process back in 2016, August of 2016. We had approximately 56 firms download and look at this solicitation by October 2016, and three submitted proposals. Of those three, we put a scoring criteria together, reaching out to finance, operations and others, supply chain management, and even outside industry experts to make sure we're getting a fair look at the value based on 24 different criteria. Through that process, we basically had the, some sort of highlights of what we're looking for, supportive asset management and digitization. Contract also needs to include all parts, labor service on planned and unplanned outages, has an explicit warranty coverage, and flattens known cost, cash flows through the agreement with the fixed escalation, and covers combustion and steam turbine maintenance risk, which is transferred to GE in this agreement, which was slightly different than what we had before. We had an agreement with a firm that was the same order of magnitude with the escalation, this will be very comparable, but we're actually getting more efficient services out of this agreement as well. So with that, today, what we're requesting is that the Board of Trustees authorize this contract award for GE in the amount of $165 million over that period. contract award for GE in the amount of $165 million over that period.
Over the 24-year period?
Right, or the 128,000 hours. So that's another milestone that could come in, that's running hours of the unit. So that may likely fall in that 24-year period at some point or could potentially.
Okay.
Second.
Dennis, any other further discussion, anyone? All in favor? Any opposed, motion carried.
Okay, I have one more. This is going to be 5C7, I believe. Transmission, transmission life and extension and modernization. This is TLEM, you're familiar with that acronym over the years. This is just another component of it, the next step in it. It's regarding the Messina substation. So the substation is, let me get to my item here, I'm sorry. I'm out of order too. So transmission life and extension, life extension and modernization program is ongoing program that is managed in a phased approach on a project basis. The Messina substation project is part of TLEM and this program involves replacement of several pieces of critical equipment. Among them are nine 750 KV breakers, those are our large breakers, associated breaker failure relays and station service transformers and 48 volt switchgear associated with that. So the switchgear equipment is reaching the end of its life, service life, in order to ensure reliability and regulatory compliance, this capital investment is required. So today, what we're requesting is the, from the Board of Trustees, is to authorize capital expenditures in the amount of $42.5 million for the Messina substation line project.
At the substation on the south side of the Grass River?
It is. Yes, it is, right? On the south side?
And that's the station that imports the current from Quebec?
Correct. There's an air plant there.
Second.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Now Jill.
Good morning Chairman and trustees. It's been an exciting few days in commercial operations, so it'll be interesting to go over my report today and give you some context.
Excitement.
Excitement, yes. So we typically start with a comparison of where we are versus our budget. So as we've seen throughout the year, our usage for what we're expecting in customers is slightly down. It's starting to converge a little bit with our forecast, but we've just generally had a mild summer. Generation, as Bob Laurie already mentioned, is a little bit above our forecast, but only 5%. So again, we're trending close to budget. Electric prices, it's the story I've been telling for a long time, are low and that's driven largely by fuel prices. But what I wanted to mention today in the context of just this last week, which isn't shown yet here on our chart because this is year-to-date August, is with all the hot and humid weather that we've all been suffering and complaining about for the last few days, that shows how much variability we can see in the market because of unexpected spike in demand, a time of year where not all of the generators were available because late September, you expect it to be a slow time. And so yesterday, we saw prices in the New York City market around 70 to 80 dollars and the day ahead was 150, $200 in the real time. And if you look at that same day a week ago, we were looking more in the 30 to 40 dollar range. So that spike and unexpected demand, the change in the market because of generators that were out of service can have a real swing on what we see in our forecast and our revenues. So some of that will be reflected when I come back and do the September numbers, but I did want to mention that for context today. So maybe we, we won't complain as much next time it's so hot and humid, but it certainly does show that the energy market can be very volatile depending on what's going on in the, in the weather. On the business development side, Gil mentioned that we had a large response from our recent RFP for large-scale renewables. This is another big activity that's keeping a lot of my team and Bob's team and others very busy these last few weeks. I'm happy to report that earlier this month, we received over 130 proposals from 51 developers. That's just to the NIPO solicitation. Our sister agency, NYSERTA, also issued a solicitation for renewable energy the same day that we did. They also received a strong response together. We got over four times as much projects proposed for new renewable energy than we had originally solicited, which is very encouraging for our opportunity to meet the very aggressive clean energy goals that the governor has laid out because it shows that there are viable projects in-state New York and out of New York State that could be imported, that it'll be necessary for us to meet the 50% renewables by 2030. On the economic development front, you'll be hearing from Keith shortly where we'll be making another award of NIPO's hydropower. This is a constant marketing activity for us where we're trying to get the maximum amount of jobs and investment for New York through our low-cost hydro. And so we are at about 760 out of 910 committed for recharge and Keith will be talking about some additional commitments for our other hydro programs today. And then my last slide is looking at our customer business. We're after this going to do a deep dive on our customer business plan and the information item that Gil mentioned. Here, we continue to run just a little bit ahead of our forecast in both customer, total customer investments and then the net revenue that NIPO uses to cover its own costs. And then at the same time, we've been diligent about managing our, our investments, our expenses so that we can watch that, you know, with our P and L, watch how much we are covering our breakeven objective. You know, here, this is continuing to be a time of investment in the customer business. So our expenses continue to outpace our revenues as we had projected in 2017 and will project again a little bit in 18, but we'll, as you'll see with, with Ron, we're looking to bring those two together in 19 and forward. And then with each of my updates to you, I like to highlight a specific project. I think it helps make the whole thing a little more tangible. Last time, I'm sure I talked about streetlights because it's one of my favorite projects these days. So I'm going to continue the lighting. Here, this is a lighting project we are in the middle of doing at SUNY Stony Brook. Bob and I actually had the opportunity to visit SUNY Stony Brook recently. I think we're doing, I wrote it down here, 28,000 LED lighting replacements just at SUNY Stony Brook, working at 48 different residence halls and classroom buildings on their campus. This is a great opportunity for NIPO where it's really in our sweet spot of our expertise. We're bringing very immediate value to the customer where the quality of lighting and other aspects of the dorm are improved immediately and the payback period is very short. So we're doing lighting projects like this around the state and we see that as a driver for our business growth. Ron, in a few minutes, is going to talk about our projections beyond this year for the growth of our business. But I also wanted to mention that we track very closely how many new contracts that we execute in the year. So in addition to having targets for our investments and revenues and targets for our expenses, in order to make sure we're building a robust pipeline, we have targets for executing new contracts. And so for reference, last year, we executed $220 million of new contracts and those, you know, come to fruition in the following year and years forward. This year, as of today, we are actually almost at that same number. So we have executed up through September, the same amount of contracts that we executed all of last year, and I still have three more months of business development work to do. So it shows that Paul Belnik and the others on my team who focus on business development for the customer business are really getting aggressive and moving forward with building our pipeline for projects with lighting and others. And so with that, I'd like to transition it over to Ron unless there's any specific questions on, on my last few slides here.
No.
Good. So Ron is going to do a tag team with Genevieve, who we talked about earlier, our new treasurer. And they're going to go over where we are with our customer business, what we see as the vision forward for how we can continue to deliver value for our customers and grow our business and how we're going to finance that. So I'll ask Ron to come up and Genevieve as well and we'll, we'll get to this part of the presentation.
Thanks Jill.
Thank you Jill. Right in the very beginning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and trustees. I am Ron Johnston, Director of Marketing, and I'd like to introduce my teammate, as you know her, Genevieve Fabbella, who's the treasurer. And we're going to go over the highlights for the 2017 customer business plan. So our overview, we're going to talk about where we are, what we see in the market as far as our environment that we have to exist in. And then we're going to talk about what our customers are asking for us, their, their, their voice. And then we're going to talk about the, the strategy to meet what the customer needs are. And then Genevieve is going to talk about the financial strategy that's going to get us there. So let's talk about the changing marketplace. This is where we find ourselves today. And the, the, the energy marketplace has gone from our traditional way of operating, has gone from a central generating facility and one-way distribution of electrons to a, a multiple bidirectional interaction with our customers. They have gone from just taking power from us to being able to generate their own power through renewable sources or wind or solar or things like that. We're also noticing a, a rise in electric vehicles and the potential of electric vehicles, which I'll get in a little bit later on. The, the opportunities with, with utility level battery storage systems and smart transmission and distribution and renewable energy resources. This is the, this is the marketplace that, that NIPO will be, will be dealing in. And what I really would like to emphasize here is that as this marketplace is changing, the NIPO is changing as well to meet the needs of that marketplace. And we're shaping our place in that marketplace as opposed to being in a position where we're just being affected by it. We're also helping to implement some of the things that, that our customers are telling us, that we're seeing in our research. So currently, to address all of these opportunities in the marketplace, we have $1.8 billion worth of projects in the development pipeline that relate to the marketplace that I, I spoke about earlier. And then we have 770 million projects that are currently in construction to, to, to be able to meet that need. Now, you know, there's a lot of, of things here, but what the most important thing that, that we'd like to, to really emphasize is recently, we've, we've engaged in a pilot with Long Island Powered Authority where we will look at roughly about 200 buildings in their territory and using our New York Energy Manager to do deep sub-metering in those buildings. When we do that, we're able to understand how they use all utilities in those buildings and be able to analyze that kind of, that data. By looking at the data, it's going to allow us to come up with new advisory services to meet the demands, whatever they may be. So we can discover opportunities that maybe our customers aren't aware of right now. But the bottom line is to make sure that they are ready to, to meet any kind of energy efficiency gains that, that they want to meet through compliance with the clean energy Now, our customer, which is most important, as we've done research and talking with our customer, they tell us this all the time and it is something that we, we, we have placed right in the middle of our business planning process. And that is, they're looking for NIPO to be their trusted energy advisor. And, and what does that mean? From our customer's standpoint, they are looking at being able to operate the way that they normally do, to, to be able to still be as productive as they are, but be able to become more efficient at doing that without noticing the change. And the way we're able to do that is by looking at our engineering and technical expertise to make sure we can understand how they're using all of their utilities and getting them to a point where they can save the money, they can become more efficient, but they're not just turning a light off and they're not just sending a shift home. That's, that's not the way to go. The way to go is to be able to, to understand what they're doing and make all of those services that we come up with, our advisory services, get them to the point that they, they have to get to. Of course, that, that, that includes energy cost savings and, and helping them to achieve their, their energy policy and goals as dictated by the clean energy, energy standard. We're looking to help them with operation and maintenance services. And more importantly, as we talked about earlier this morning about resiliency and dependability, that's the work with the microgrid. That's the real benefits to being able to diversify how the customer gets power and to make sure that their power quality is at a standard that they can live with. So what is the view of the future? What is our vision? What is our strategy to meet these things based on what our customer is telling us and based on how the market is changing? Well, let's talk about the, the building retrofits business. And Genevieve is really going to get into this a little bit later on in the presentation. But we are looking to lead the way by coming up with $350 million worth of annual, annual loans to, to help our customers realize these energy efficiency capital projects. Where we, we are going to be using, again, the New York Energy Manager and its sub-metering capabilities to, to look at opportunities for us to position more energy efficiency work with these customers. And under the New York Energy Manager, it's, it's our initial step towards, towards the digital utility. And, and it also allows us to, again, understand where our customers are and, and be able to identify a lot of the things that they don't know today. Also, this is what we would consider new technologies. We are going to be focused on these new technologies in, in a, in a very big way. Our, our electric vehicle infrastructure, we know through research that in 2040, 54% of all new car sales will be electric vehicles. So we are involved and will lead the way by designing and creating and installing electric vehicle charging stations in all 28 New York State thruway rest stops. Let's talk about solar energy and battery storage. We are going to be involved with and, and lead the way with developing 125 megawatts of public power. And we're going to roll out wide-scale energy battery, battery storage at a utility level. Our microgrids, we are of course, leading the way with $150 million of microgrid project development. And we will help our customers by operating up to 100 million megawatts of customer sit at microgrid capability behind their, their meter. And lastly, under our category of new technology is the smart lighting. We are going to lead the way with converting over 100 municipalities within the state to LED street lighting. We think that within those, that, that's range of projects, that possibly about 10% of those projects will use the new smart lighting functions. And, and those smart lighting functions can be anything from traffic monitoring, air quality, occupancy and several other, other, other items that could be included in those capabilities. And finally, we feel that within 20 years, that we should be the, the leaders in converting over 100% of all of the street lighting in the state to, to LEDs. That is, that is our goal and, and, and we are well on, on our way to making that happen. So let's look at the revenue streams. So I talked about the new energy technology, which is smart lighting, which is my, my grids, the electric vehicle infrastructure, the solar and the battery storage. So that's considered under the new technology line. The traditional business of NIPO is the energy efficiency, that's the building retrofits that we, that I spoke about as well. The top line is what we're really excited is the, the New York Energy Manager because by deep sub-metering these customers, we're going to discover a lot of things. We're going to discover the true usage and, and be able to create digital twins of these buildings under our customers, which will then dictate the different services that could be offered to those customers. Also, the, the, the fact that you have that kind of data in that easily manipulated database will allow us to, to move the data itself as a project, as, as a product. So a lot of other businesses can look at that data and can begin to, can, can take it and model and come up with their own business services. And this is something that Gil referred to earlier in, in his, in his speech. So we believe that by 2019, that all of those services will gain enough revenue to overcome our expenses. And then moving forward, there's a positive revenue flow. Now, how are we going to make all of that happen while Genevieve is going to talk about the capital financing needed for all of that activity?
Okay. Right. So we're doing a lot. I think that's clear, but, so how are we going to pay for it? This graph is saying quite a lot in one page, so we'll try to break it down. And essentially, I want to present our proposed financial strategy to the board for your further review. We do plan to come back to the board with a more detailed plan. This is more of a high-level overview, but right now, we're, we'll, we'll come back with This is more of a high-level overview, but right now we're, we'll, we'll come back with real numbers, more hard numbers and get your further comments. So, let's try to break this down. The black line here represents our total net investment of what we're expecting over the next five years. The green bars here represent our recoveries of the loan payback for our energy efficiency program. And, and the, yeah, and then the, the red bars are essentially our expected revenue streams. On the side of the slide, this is more of a balance sheet impact. So, if, if we continue with our existing financial strategy as we do it today, this would be the, the pro forma of our commercial paper balance. And as you can see, the red line is representing our current view of our 600 million dollar credit, commercial paper credit limit, which is based on our existing credit rating, cash reserves and our liquidity. And as we're approaching 2019, we start to exceed that, that current credit limit. So, essentially that's going to drive a change or a drive, it drives a need to change our financial strategy if we can, if we continue, continue the way we're doing things. So, we also do want to, when we do the more detailed financial plan, we also do want to do more investigation into whether that 600 million credit limit is the appropriate number long-term or whether there's any ability to expand that or stretch that beyond the, sorry, where we are today. So, our traditional business is our generation and transmission and our energy efficiency. And in order to expand and support the new revenue streams, we, we have two great strengths that are given to us by our traditional business. One is a large cash, cash balance, 1.4 billion that we're expecting in '22 and our existing double A credit rating. We can leverage both of these two. We basically want to, our proposed financial strategy is to take a conservative portion of our cash reserves to invest it into the growth segment areas and while still protecting our credit rating and our existing bondholders. The black line essentially represents an isolation of the risk of the new business segments by, for our existing bondholders. So, we are expecting a, a cash equity investment of 50 to 400 million through 2020, which is quite a large range. But the reason why that's a large range is the, essentially the, it's uncertain where these growth segments are going to go. And we, we would plan to come back to the board annually to get a cash allocation in, in support of these new businesses. And it's, it's just in terms of the, the ability to project where, how much cash is appropriate, what our risk appetite is for these businesses, we're still working on finalizing all that. So, I would expect that range to, to come in tighter over time. Essentially, we're, we're, we have two different types of financing need depending on the revenue streams that, of the businesses that we would support. So, you have self-financing projects, which is large-scale renewables, microgrids, essentially any project that has long-term revenue contracted at the day of investments. You have very known cash flows going forward. You have startup businesses where you have kind of more uncertainty in what those revenues are going to look like, and you would need to finance these types of businesses in two, in two different ways. So, essentially the cash ejection would be used under the self-financing category. It would be used as a debt service reserve that would support any pool of typical financing that you have on the project side that we could tap into depending on what's appropriate for that investment. And on the startup side, it would preserve as working capital, startup working capital. And once those revenues are more established, then you can tap into the, the traditional financing methods through banks. And I had next steps in here. I think our next steps are essentially going to be finalizing what this plan is going to look like, what the numbers are going to look like in more detail and coming back with establishing our risk appetite, working with our risk colleagues to figure out what is the right appropriate level of risk in each of the segments. And then, and then finally getting your views. So, and that's it.
...
Yes, that's it. I don't know why my slides are different. Yes.
Just add, add a comment there if I could, Mr. Chairman. So, a, a lot of what Genevieve just presented regarding the financing strategy is really based on assumptions about information we don't really have yet, particularly the, as Jill described, the large-scale renewable proposals that we've received may well entail a good bit of investment on NIPA's part that in fact will be, could even be larger than the energy efficiency investment that Genevieve described. Depending on how that happens and also what the working capital requirements would be for the startup businesses that we're still evaluating, the, the financial strategy will, will certainly change. And we haven't provided any numbers of what's in each category because we don't know those, those important pieces of information yet. So, our intent is to gather all that information as we evaluate the art, the large-scale renewable proposals, put together a model and a forecast for, for you to evaluate with the numbers behind each category and bring that to the Finance Committee and to the full board for review and, and approval. So, we're not asking for any approval of any of that today. This is really just giving you our thoughts about how we see this playing out and what we'll propose to you at a future meeting.
Have you been in the authority taking an equity position in some new startups and stuff like that?
Well, absolutely. I think some of these, New York Energy Manager certainly is an example where that is a startup business that we own. We, we expect they'll be intellectual property that we own and there'll be working capital investments associated with that. I, I don't want to characterize that as an equity investment in the sense of owning stock because we can't own stock in a separate entity under a state law, but it is financially the same in that we will be the sole owner of any of the assets in any of those businesses. So, there may be for other businesses that might happen. For example, as Jill described, a lighting business. So, there may be a separate lighting as a service kind of a business. Or energy storage or electric vehicles or major areas of investment in our strategic plan that could involve us setting those up as, not, not an independent entity because it's all under NIPA governance, but financially separate from the, the core business.
Where we'd at least be able to accrue or realize some of the economic benefits.
Exactly. And, and also where we hope to create partnerships with the private sector to help implement, particularly where there's services that they can provide better than us or software that they have or other assets that we can bring to the table through partnership instead of doing it all ourselves.
Okay, Mike?
So, at the end of 10 years, what does success look like?
As far as, well, at the end of 10 years, we think that the things that we're going to identify through looking at NIAM and also the new technologies that we're going to be embedded with and increasing our engineering expertise to look at the information that comes out of NIAM through the deep sub-metering puts us in a, in a great place so that we'll be able to develop new products that we don't have right now that's going to take advantage of that new information. And so, we're looking at being positioned to not only do business within the New York State area, but some of these products could be of value outside of New York.
And trustee Balboni, I would add, it's a healthy, financially sustainable part of the organization. You know, right now, we're investing in the organization and subsidizing its growth. But as Ron and Genevieve have displayed, success is when it's self-sustaining and we're continuing to increase the value we provide to customers. So, instead of doing 200 million in annual investments like we're doing now, we're doing 500 million in 10 years.
Yeah. What the, so, I mean, this line in terms of what the customer wants, the marketplace wants, we're, our investments have continued to better position us as a market leader in response to this and we're setting the pace and tone, right?
We're making a strong enough return to recycle our capital to keep, to keep investing.
Correct.
And we stated in our strategic plan, we want to be the market leader in some of these areas, so market share will be an important component.
Thank you.
Uh, maybe a two and a degree question. Give me 30 seconds. Why our commercial paper capacity wouldn't be expected, wouldn't have the opportunity to improve or increase that as we look forward?
I think it would essentially enable us to use the traditional financing methods that we've used today where we're, we're getting fast paybacks from our customers that pay lump sum. We can invest in their energy efficiency. It's more efficient many cases for them to use their own capital. However...
I would expect that to flex. I'm just making sure what I'm missing.
Oh, in terms of the, the, the ability to increase it? I, I mean, I think it depends on our cash reserves backing it.
Our commercial paper program is structured with a backup line of credit backing it up and it's for the full amount of the commercial paper that we issue. We think there's some flexibility to essentially remove that constraint, but there's some work we have to do with our banks to make that happen with the rating agencies. But we think there might be some flexibility to, to increase it.
Well, point off Jill's opening comment. I mean, I put all this in the exciting bucket. I mean, this is what energizes, pun intended, everyone, sure, around the table in the room and across the organization, the board included. It isn't just keeping the lights on. It's an opportunity to change the world and lead the change as it's all evolving. So, yeah, terrific. Well done.
Thanks.
Great. Super. All right. I think we've otherwise covered the individual appropriations. I'm up to Keith and replacement power, right? Keith is up. We've got some in Western New York. We've got some in the North Country.
I hope this goes in the exciting bucket.
Well, be realistic, Keith.
So, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Let me be the first to say good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. 12:10. Well done, Keith.
Trustees and everyone in attendance today. This item requests the trustees to approve a four-megawatt allocation of replacement power to Moog Incorporated.
Moog.
Moog, which is planning to construct a new 95,000-square-foot facility to expand its aircraft group at its complex in the town of Elma in Erie County. The allocation would support the creation of 69 new high-paying jobs and investment of $33.8 million. This expansion will support production efficiencies, future growth and the development of new programs and products. The item also requests the trustees to authorize a public hearing on the proposed contract for Moog. And I just want to point out that Moog has several allocations, longstanding allocations from NIPA. This allocation would take them slightly over 10 megawatts. But what's important to note is the total new jobs committed in total is 3,224. So, we're talking about 308 jobs per megawatt in Western New York. So, very significant.
As a major player.
Yes. Moog is a current hydro and RNY customer and they are in compliance with their existing allocations and contractual commitments. The item is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any questions.
How much of the market share does Moog have?
It's pretty, it's, yes. And I can tell you that their sales exceed $1 billion annually.
Yeah. I want their market, market share as Mike, but they're a major player, you know, in the market, a real industry leader and, yeah, they're a major corporate player in, in the Western New York region, but certainly in their industry and their niche, government and defense and all the rest of that, they're the prime time.
Yeah. Important to note also that their, their annual wages are probably double the average household median in Western New York.
Yeah. If I could, then ask for a motion to approve for recommendation. Second, second. Thanks, Dennis. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Keith, next exciting recommendation.
Your own role. No, August 15th of this year, the Northern New York Power Proceeds Allocation Board or Proceeds Board recommended that three businesses be awarded fund benefits totaling $400,000. The related projects which you received in your board books are tied to the creation of 32 jobs and over $4 million in project investments. The trustees are asked to approve these recommendations. I want to note that these are the first fund benefit awards related to the Northern New York Proceeds Program, and there is currently about $2.5 million available, of which approximately $372,000 is dedicated to energy-related projects. This item is submitted for your approval.
Well, I know it's always exciting, allocating aside, that's terrific. Very pleased to hear that this is, this program has now been launched, so well done. Good work and outstanding.
I would like the adoption of the award.
Second.
Aye. Aye. All in favor? Yeah. And again, kudos to everyone. Said the program's been very high-impact in Western New York and I'm sure it'll be the same in the North Country, so.
Yes.
Great to hear. Great to hear.
Thanks for your support.
Super. Thanks, Keith. It was very exciting. More so than I anticipated. Well, well done. Well done. All right. Wrap up with some brief committee reports, one of which we've effectively had. We had two committee meetings earlier today. First was governance and Judge, I think you reported out on the only action that we took there in terms of Genevieve's appointment.
Genevieve, we've already seen her in action and the recommendation of the...
There's no need to rescind that approval, right? Capably performed, real time.
Governance committee did a good job.
And we're feeling even better about it, right? It's only got a billion-two gap to fill, but I'm sure she'll do it. All right. We also spent some time in audit committee, both internal, external.
Audit is, we have some changes in the audit committee report in that since, you'll recall, our last meeting, there was some, I would say angst on the part of the committee as to where we were in our internal audit program. And since then, going in a different direction, there have been some change in the personnel in the department to more align the goal of the audit committee as far as internal audit is concerned. In the meantime, Joe Grislow and Angela Gonzalez have filled in and is heading up the, the internal audit program. And they're backing up with some help from Deloitte and filling in gaps on our internal audit program for 2017. We are also, the audit committee has been meeting regularly the last 60 days and starting the process for search for...
Yeah. Let me get that in there. As far as this is not a cyber attack, we're all set.
So, Bignan, what was that?
We're good.
Okay. So, I just wanted to report that, you know, that the committee has been working on that and that we're on...
Well, every transition's challenging. We're feeling good about where we are. I think it was the essence of the discussion, as Joe, Angela stepped in and stepped up from a leadership standpoint, working under Justin's oversight. Yeah, I thought it was a, a good, healthy dialogue today. Pleased with the outcomes. And KPMG's kicked off their annual audit process.
Yep. And that was reported in committee as well. So, their report was good and that they're on track as well, so.
Okay. Unless there's any other questions of the judge, those are the only two committee reports of the moment. We'll be reconstituting our committee membership the next 30 days with the benefit of now our reconstituted board, so it's, it's, I'll circle up with everyone and we'll have that operating rhythm kicked in by year end. So, appreciate that. Lastly, then, we have a resolution and some recognition to provide. Mr. Lurie, are you taking the lead on that?
I can. I wasn't, I don't have it in front of me, so.
Don't need to make this exciting. I mean...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as, as you all know, I believe it was referenced at the, the last meeting, our treasurer, Brian McElroy, is retiring after 29, 28 years of service. And just wanted to commend him for all of his long service. So, we have a resolution that I'm asking the board to pass, commending him for that service, if I could read this with your discretion. Whereas Brian McElroy provided the New York Power Authority with nearly three decades of dedication and essential leadership roles, most recently as treasurer. Whereas Mr. McElroy joined NIPA in 1989 as a budget analyst, administering all phases of operating and capital budget preparations and review and developing annual long-term financial plans for the operating budget. Whereas Mr. McElroy was promoted in 1991 and 1994 to more senior budget analyst roles. Whereas Mr. McElroy transferred to the Treasury Department in 1997 when NIPA was rewriting its bond covenant to better adapt to the marketplace, thanks in part to Mr. Mc... Thanks in part to Mr. McElroy, who was serving as an analyst. NIPA refunded its entire portfolio of bonds and notes, saving more than $700 million in the process. And Mr. McElroy was recognized as the department's employee of the year for his contributions. Whereas Mr. McElroy progressed through the ranks of the Treasury Department, took responsibility for the investment portfolio of more than $2 billion, was promoted to treasurer in 2007. And whereas Mr. McElroy led the effort to improve NIPA's bond ratings, resulting in ratings that are among the highest of any public power entity in the country. This in turn reduced NIPA's borrowing costs for the benefits of our customers. Um, I'm going to skip down to the bottom. This is a very long resolution in the interest of time. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the trustees of the Power Authority of the State of New York express their thanks and admiration to Brian McElroy for his many achievements and convey to him and his wife Donna sincere wishes for the many happy, healthy, and rewarding years ahead. Thank you, Brian, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Take a break, Sean.
Any parting words or thoughts?
Make it exciting.
Uh, as you know me, I'm a, a man of very few words, but, um, it's been a great pleasure to serve this great organization. I've had the opportunity to, to work with some wonderful, uh, individuals throughout my 28 years here, uh, seen, uh, a number of different board members and executive leadership, and I want to thank you all for your support over the years. Also, we've done, uh, many amazing things here at the Power Authority with the beginning of the construction of our St. Lawrence facility. And I'm sure with our new leadership with Genevieve, I'm confident we'll do some, many more amazing things. And I'm going to quote Gil, um, to sum up my 28 years here. Gil recently said, "It's very cool to be at and work for the Power Authority." Uh, it was cool 28 years ago and it's still cool today, so that's the widgets for everybody. Much appreciated.
Genevieve, we choose to film. No pressure. And Bob, when we read your resolution, we'll be skipping right to the bottom. Yeah, okay. All right. Unless there's any other matters that come before this distinguished group, I'd, uh, ask for a motion, uh, to adjourn. Uh, our next meeting, uh, will be back here in White Plains in either November or December. Uh, we've got some tentative...
December 12.
Okay. For what I think is, uh, a day and a half, uh, session, at least as, uh, contemplated. So until then, if I can have a motion, uh, to adjourn, so moved, have a second. I assume no further discussion on that motion. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you, one and all, for, uh, another exciting, uh, meeting. Thanks so much. Have a great day, everyone.